Okay. This is the call to order the Willmet Public Library District Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, January 21st at 7:35 in the staff lounge. Can we have a roll call?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee, Secretary Trustee Barshis.
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson absent. Trustee Riddle?
Here.
Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
And Trustee McDonald?
Here. Today, we do not have any public present. We do have one of the Legal Women Voters observers, so there will be no public comment. There is no one to do a public comment today. So behind number three, section number two, one, you've got the minutes from Tuesday, November 19th meeting. Is there a motion?
I will move that we approve the minutes from the Tuesday, November 19th, 2019 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Trustee Wolf has moved and Trustee Barshis has seconded that we approve the November 19th, 2019 board minutes. Is there any discussion? Okay, given there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nay? Any opposed? The minutes pass unanimously. Oh, sorry. Turn that off.
Is Harry Potter?
No, Harry Potter won't be here tomorrow. We have no presentations, so we will switch it over to Trustee Rogers for the Treasures report.
November and December reports are in your packet. The November revenue was $27,000 and change in general fund interest, just below $20,000 in real estate taxes, and $3,600 in miscellaneous income. The December income was about $50,000 from the Kenilworth Library District, $18,000 in general fund interest, $14,601 in gifts and donations, and just under $14,000 in real estate taxes. As you can see, those are not big tax receipt months. The majority of the expenses also were within the boundaries of the budget. The exceptions are noted. The principal ones had to do with periodical payments that occur early in the year and are not repeated during the entire year. There is nothing extraordinary in either November or December's financial reports. Are there any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I suggest that, just for clarity and simplicity, we act separately on the November and December checks or bills and salaries. I move approval of the November 2019 bills and salaries.
I'll second.
Trustee Rogers has moved the approval of the bills and salaries for the month of November 2019, and Trustee Wolf has seconded. Any discussion? Can we have a, no discussion, once, twice? Can we have a roll call then?
True.
All votes in.
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson absent. Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
And Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
I move approval of the December 2019 bills and salaries.
I second. Trustee Rogers has moved approval of the bills and salaries for the month of December 2019, and so Trustee Riddle has seconded. Is there any discussion? I move approval of the bills and salaries for the month of December 2019. Trustee?
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson absent. Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
And Trustee McDonald?
Aye. Okay. We're going to move to the Director's Report. Director Austin?
Okay. Good evening, all. It gives me great pleasure to introduce my Director's Report by including an item that is not behind tab five in the Director's Report. In the course of this past month, the library has learned that it has earned a national accolade from Library Journal. You may recall last November when we met, the library received its first star rating from Library Journal, and that placed the library in the top 3.5 percent in the country in terms of that national recognition. The library is no longer a three-star library. The library is now a five-star library. The metrics that define this include a number of output measures and statistical data that is reported nationally. And that data includes, the metrics that this is based on, our visits per capita, circulation, program attendance, electronic resource circulation, public computer use, and Wi-Fi sessions per capita. So this is the second year in a row that our library has stood out in terms of our statistical measures in Library Journal's survey. There are 6,333 public libraries in the nation, and Willmet Library is one of 261 libraries that qualify as a star library. So as I said, that places us in the top 4 percent of libraries in the country based on these measures. And in the state of Illinois, there are 17 libraries that received a star rating. Illinois is one of the better represented states in the nation for the quality of its libraries. A number of states in New England also fall into that category as well. Seven libraries in Illinois of that 17 also earned five-star ratings, so we've got really great libraries in the region. And we're in good company. Cook Memorial Library in Libertyville is included as a five-star library, as is Elmhurst, Fountaindale in Bolingbrook, Lanark, a small library on the far west side, over just south of like the Galena area, Naperville, Northbrook, and Willmet. So we are delighted, and I think it is a credit to our community for their high use of the library, because these are all statistical measures, as it is a credit to the board and staff for supporting all of the initiatives that we bring forward. So we're really, we're honored and we're thrilled to share that information with you this evening. We're working up a press release so that we can celebrate that and let the community know that their efforts are rewarded, and we'll continue to support them.
Good. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Could we have a five-star party?
A five-star party?
And let, you know, and you could come talk to the trustees and give your ideas and just sort of learn a little bit about the library, because the five-star party is what they've helped make in terms of staff.
We could certainly consider that.
Okay.
All right.
Anthony, how did you find out about it? Like, were you, do you get surveyed? How do they, how do we know that we qualify?
So we, you know, as you know, you approved the Illinois Public Library data, the Iplar report, and that is an account of all of our statistical measures. So that gets reported to the Public Library Data Service, and all of that information is then compiled and then run through these analytics, and that's where the information comes from. Library Journal did not reach out to us. We happened to find it simply by leaping through the magazine and going, "Oh, my gosh. We're in here. This is amazing." So, yeah.
Congrats.
Yeah, it's really cool. Okay, so into the actual items that contribute to that. So behind tab five, you will see the Director's Report, and we open with the Strategic Plan Progress Updates, as we do. And a couple items that I would like to highlight for you include some objectives on page two. I want to call your attention to Objective 2.2. There's a mention further about this in our collection section, and we've been talking about this for a while, but in the event that you happen to step onto the mezzanine in the near future, you're going to see that things are in a period of transition right now. As I've been talking about the past couple of months, our periodical collection is now being barcoded so that it's easier for patrons to access and for staff to track use of our periodical collection. As part of that, we're right-sizing that periodical collection and trying to promote its use and make it more accessible. The periodical collection, as you may know, is currently located in three locations. The current periodicals are in the periodical room at the front of the library, just above the vestibule entrance on the second floor. Back issues are found in two locations, on the mezzanine, which is just on the south side of the building above the reference area, and in the compact shelving storage on the lower level, which is behind a door across from the Friends Books Down Under store. We have been analyzing this collection for quite a while, and in an effort to promote its use, as I said, we're trying to right-size it. We'd like to get a lot of those materials that are relatively unknown to the public on the mezzanine placed back up in the periodicals room, and to get rid of the materials that are no longer of immediate use to the community out of the compact shelving room and make more space for storage in that area. So in order to do that, we're in the process of shifting, and the long-term goal is to make more seating options available on the mezzanine. So by freeing up the storage there, we'll be able to move some of the reference collections over further to the north side of that area, and the south side of the mezzanine will soon become a seating area once those stacks can come down. It'll probably take us a quarter to get through this, but in the event that you happen to observe some activity over there, that's what's cooking.
So are we reducing the size and the number of periodicals also?
Well, yes. I mean, the short answer is yes. A lot of those decisions are unfortunately being made for the library. We've had another five titles that were discontinued or are no longer in publication and print, and this is a trend that we've been reporting for some time now, that this periodical readership is not what it used to be. And a lot of publishers are opting to move their collections over to a digital-only service. So that's another thing that's driving that decision. Retention is also part of this. A lot of our back issues simply do not get used if they're not the front-facing periodical. Periodicals, by definition, are ephemeral. They're really only used for the week, month, or quarter that they're posted, and then interest kind of wanes in them unless they're used for a research purpose. And the overwhelming majority of the periodicals that we subscribe to are available in an electronic resource that are immediately searchable. So accessibility is a big part of it, too. We try to promote use of the electronic collections. So our goal is to kind of right-size that. A number of our periodicals, we would have a retention period of maybe two years on those, and we just don't have the space or the demand for us to have that kind of collection. So that's why we've been diminishing those.
Excuse me, can they access back articles for most of those periodicals through our database?
Yes.
In terms of reference?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not in every case, but I would say the overwhelming majority of the cases, yes. And we are certainly not the only library to retain these titles, so it's not as though our patrons no longer have access to these collections. We've been tracking data on the titles that we've been discontinuing of our own volition, as well as the ones that we're trying to, you know, adjust our retention period on, and we're certainly not reducing anything that is in demand. And there's no, there's really no consistency to, because there isn't really consistency in the way that magazines are published. You've got weeklies, bi-weeklies, monthlies, the special issues, bi-monthlies, quarterlies, and there's variations, and they'll change it at the drop of a hat. And as a result, and then you've got different sizes of periodicals, it is a beast to maintain that collection. So kudos to the team that does it. And, yes, absolutely, the ecological impact is another thing.
Anthony, you mentioned you're barcoding them.
Yes.
Is there any way for a patron to look at the physical magazine and know if it's also accessible, as Lisa just asked, as part of the database?
That is something that we're trying to work with on a broader scale, too, so to advertise the availability of that title in a database. The challenge there is that retention of those kind of shifts over time, too, so it's a thing to stay on top of.
So can't like color-code the label or something and know that that way it's also available?
Yeah, we would have to manually keep track of, is that title still in that database? But that is definitely a way of trying to promote digital access to the collections, too, is to say, if you can't get the book or the magazine right now, have you tried looking online for it? Yeah.
Yeah, to Lisa's point, just to break in for a second, I had only the cover of a magazine with something on the cover that I wanted to research and take a look at, and it was like three years old or four years old, something like that. So I did take it to one of the librarians downstairs, and she found it online and showed me how to do it, and so, you know, it is possible.
And we also have access to an outstanding university just a stone's throw from here, and they have a deep collection as well, as well as, I mentioned at the top of my report, a lot of really great libraries in the area, too, that will also have supplemental collections that we have access to, either through CCS or through interlibrary loan. So I still feel that our periodicals collection is first-rate, and we're following industry trends in terms of how we're managing that collection and trying to promote its access right now. So space utilization is definitely something that is of prime interest. If you have been in the library, like yesterday, for example, it was a busy day here with a lot of the students preparing for finals, so we want to make sure that we're using our space appropriately, that we've got tables and chairs for those that need to do their studying, and that we're taking advantage of all the free space that we've got. So we remain committed to that. Just below that, in Objective 3.2, you'll see that the youth services staff is designing a social story to help youth and adults with disabilities to feel more comfortable when they're visiting the library. So they're creating a social story, which is a series of images and descriptions, which help to prepare a first-time visitor by showing what the library looks like and what they can expect when they come to visit the library.
That's very nice.
And we're going to promote this on the website.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Also related to our efforts to promote more inclusivity, Objective 3.4, we're adding a new book list with recommended books about gender expression and gender identity. This is something new for us. It's going to, will go in our bibliography section. As well as, we're also developing storytimes that have own voices, stories in them. So the Read Allowed Books, I'll just read the sentence. We're also sharing Read Allowed Books with each other that feature a diverse representation of race, gender, and ability with a focus on own voices. Own voices are books that means that the author is writing as a main character who's part of a marginalized group, and we're trying to promote inclusivity by doing more of these own voices. We've got a display on that. It's just, it's part of our EDI initiative that we're just going to continue with, so I wanted to share that information with you. Moving forward to our programs, January 2nd is the kickoff of our Winter Reading Club. Our Winter Reading Program is generously supported by the Friends of the Willmet Library. We've got a program for both adults and teens, as well as youth. We've got special branding this year, and there's a banner across the public service desks on the first and second floor to promote the program, and we're seeing more sign-ups than we have at this early stage than we did last year. So we think that banner is helping to promote that. So basically, the program is just listen or read three books, return your log, and when you come back in, you can select a book from the Winter Reading card with the materials that are donated by the Friends. The objective of our Winter Reading Program is to support literacy and to promote reading. So there's no tchotchkes or special plastic prizes. You're rewarded with a book.
Yeah, that's nice. I really like that, yeah. And I am certainly publicizing it in the condo, and people are taking to it quite well.
Nice. All right. The other bit of news that I really want to celebrate is our staff this past fall, our One Book Everybody Reads Committee selected their title, and this month they've announced their title. "American Dirt" by Janine Cummins is our selection, and we made this decision months ago. However, that title is fast becoming one of the most talked-about titles of 2020 and has garnered an awful lot of attention from a number of publications, and today just earned Oprah's Seal of Approval and has been selected as one of her book club selections. So we anticipate that this is going to be a hotly popular book.
Yep.
The book was, in fact, released today.
Yes.
There is a holds list on this title right now. We have, I forget how many copies of it, many, many, many copies. If you are interested in participating, and we hope you are, we'd like to encourage you to get on the waitlist for it right now, and it's available in multiple formats, not just the plain print copy.
Not to put a plug in for the book stall, but they called me today to say that they had a copy thing, so.
And the book stall will definitely be a party to our programming as well. We'll have more information about our program as this wears on. We typically have our author event in May, and that is our plan. So we'll keep you posted. You're going to hear a lot more about it in the coming months. All right. What else can I share with you here? I think the biggest news of my report this month comes towards the end of my report when I get to talk about and celebrate the staff. A lot's been going on in the last couple of months on the human resources front. We've had a number of retirements. Our first retirement announcement was in November. Our business manager, Barbara Griffiths, announced her retirement. We're excited for her. Her role is a really important and critical one, so we wanted to make sure that we did right by her and were able to preserve her legacy. So we went through that whole review process, and we're excited to announce that we have selected our successor. The current Assistant Finance Director for the Village of Willmet, John Risco, is going to be our new finance manager, and John will be working full-time, and he'll occupy an office in the administrative offices, and he will begin on February 17th. So the day before our next board meeting will be John's first day. And John will regularly attend our monthly meetings and finance committee meetings as well. So we'll have an ample opportunity to get to know him here at this meeting.
Who does he work under? Do you know?
Melinda Malloy is his current supervisor. As you all may have heard, in December, our Adult Services Manager, Betty Georgie, who just celebrated 25 years with the library, announced her retirement as well. The applications for her position were accepted through this past Friday, and we're currently in the process of reviewing our applications. We have over 20, and I'm really excited by what I'm seeing there. So we're looking hopeful to the future about what her successor is in store for us. So we'll keep you apprised of that process as we go through that. We love to celebrate internal promotions, and I'm happy to report that in November, our Part-Time Circulation Assistant, Amy Young, accepted a full-time interlibrary loan assistant position. That was a position that was vacated earlier this past year, so we're excited to have Amy in that capacity. She's been working with the library for over 13 years. In Community Services, our graphic designer, Sarah Rose, who's been part-time with us since 2017, she accepted full-time hours as well, and that can only mean great things for our branding and promotions going forward. She's done a lot of really outstanding work this past year for us.
Yeah, she has.
We just hired a new shelve, Peter Sandstrom. He's PhD, a retired teacher from Minnesota. We're thrilled to have him here, and if you're interested over there on the bulletin board, you can learn a little bit more about Peter. There's a picture of him and a bio. And then we had a lot of big news in Youth Services that we just announced this past week. So we did some internal movement within the department. Our part-time librarian, Jennifer Lee, will transition to full-time. She's been with the library for over six years and has been instrumental in growing our world language collection and programs for school aged children and our STEAM lab. Our full-time librarian, Janet Peal, is taking on additional responsibilities now as our newly-created Maker Librarian. She has been instrumental in launching our Maker Fest, which last year drew over 400 people to the library, and our next event will be on Leap Day, and we're expecting a big turnout for that as well. We'll talk more about that at our next meeting. So we're thrilled to have Janet in that capacity, and she's working right now on implementing our 3D printing program. And I'm also excited to report that our full-time librarian, Lisa Bigelow, has accepted the role of being our Assistant Manager of Youth Services. We haven't had that support level in Youth Services, so we're thrilled to have her. And Lisa has been with the library for 13 years as well, and she's been instrumental in expanding the depth of our youth literature collection, so we're thrilled to have her in that role. So a lot of staffing developments going on right now. I'll also point out, too, that we celebrated a number of staff anniversaries in the fourth quarter, including a number of staff that have been with the library over 20 years, and I think that's a pattern that we've been seeing over time. Willmet Library is a great place to work, and our staff are loyal and dedicated to their service. Debbie Thompson celebrated 24 years with the library, Angela Traver 26, Louise Nidorf 27, and Amy Barrow 37. You'll also see, we had a posting on our Instagram there of Betty and Barbara Goodman. Barbara celebrated 30 years with the library back in November, so we've got a really great and experienced team with us, and that's one of our great virtues and values that we can celebrate with the community. It also means that there's an inevitability at some point here, we're going to start seeing some retirements and some roles that are going to, some big shoes to fill. That, I think, is kind of my concise summary of my report. Do you all have any questions or comments from you about library activities in November, December, or anything else?
Some kinds of working hard months that sometimes tend to be slower for many people. So congrats, and thank you for your dedication, and your HR team for their dedication.
We're lucky to have Mike.
Yes. That, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Any idea what the staff training is going to be?
The staff training?
For your staff day?
Staff Development Day is March 20th. We currently don't have a defined theme around the day. The committee is at work on developing the program right now, so we'll have all those details tidied up probably before the next meeting in February, so I'll give you a full report on what the plan is at the February 18th meeting.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Barshis, do you have anything from ILA?
Oh, I do. Since I've had two months to put things together. No, I didn't go overboard.
Thank you.
Back in November, the ILA had a posting that talked about how green is your library, and there were some interesting articles, as well as reference books that could be used, so when we get to our strategic planning, that may be an area where we'd like to look into it, and there should be some help there. One kind, just a, not a funny thing, but kind of, it says, "Meet the Bookmobile's cousin." So we have our bookmobile. This, in the Brooklyn Public Library, is a cookmobile, and it travels, it's on wheels, and it teaches public library patrons how to cook. So that's an interesting use of what we have, which is our bookmobile.
Were they getting subsidies from the, in terms of public health?
It didn't say.
I would think.
Yeah. You could probably find out. Let's see. Oh, there was one, this was an interesting article, just the way they put it. It's "Public Libraries Versus the Echo Chamber." This is something that we are actually addressing at this library, and what that means is that you're constantly talking with somebody, or tweeting, or doing whatever, with other people who are like you, and so you get affirmation in this echo chamber, is how they describe it. And the, a couple of the things that we've had earlier encourage people to learn about other people's ideas and how they thought, and to, you know, converse with them and perhaps broaden their own feelings and categories. This article contends that the echo chamber can be very harmful because you don't look outside of the box, your own box, the box that you've made. And then, an interesting one about law and liability for fake news and what the librarians can and can't do about that when patrons want information. There are lawyer-librarian fields, actually, with actual questions about that. How far can a librarian go in talking with people who are perhaps steeped on... How far can a librarian go in talking with people who are perhaps steeped on fake news? And that's a real touchy situation. It's not one I'm going to ever, you know, make a pronouncement on, but it's out there, and it's difficult, I would think, if you're a librarian and you have somebody come up and just, you know, spout all this stuff that maybe you know isn't really correct according to what's out there. But that's a difficult area to go into.
I think they've done some work, I think they've done a workshop on terms in here. They've done a couple in terms of how to identify fake news.
Mm-hmm. Those things can be helpful if they get the people in there who need to learn about it.
Right.
Yeah. So those were the ones that I thought.
I'll add one other thing from ILA. It is the season for legislative meetups, as you'll see in the important dates section here. For our region, Presidents' Day is always the day that our legislators come to talk with library representatives. So Presidents' Day is Monday, February 17th, and that's the day before our next board meeting. If you are interested in participating in the legislative meetup, let me know at your first convenience, and we'll make sure that we get you registered for the event.
That's early, isn't it?
It's early in the morning, and it's always snowing.
It usually snows that day.
It's like 7:00?
7:45 is when the breakfast begins. The program begins at 8:30, I believe.
And it's about 45 minutes longer than we expected it to be to get there.
But always a good time, so I encourage you all to participate if you can. All right, Finance Committee?
Okay, Committees, Finance, Staff Directors, in terms of what's next?
We will need to conduct a poll to see what times would be appropriate to consider scheduling a meeting to continue our work on Finance Committee policies or Board Policies that the Finance Committee is reviewing. I don't have any specific suggestions for dates at the moment.
So the action, I think, that we had at our Finance Committee meeting on December 3rd was the committee directed Dr. Rogers and I to review the policy suggestions that are brought forward by the committee members and to discuss recommendations for that policy, and then make a draft proposal of that and bring it before the committee for review. So Dr. Rogers and I are going to meet and talk about policy here in the near future, and then at that point, we'll schedule a meeting to discuss that.
So does something happen in the interim, just a note to all the Finance members to please review and get back to you by a set day?
Well, I'll remind everyone that if you've got content that you would like to bring forward, please do so, and we'll incorporate that, those recommendations. We did have a lot of discussion about that at the meeting on the 3rd, but, you know, I would just encourage you to continue to review that policy and those policies. And if you've got any suggestions for us, let us know, and we'll work that up. Does that follow what your understanding was, Ron?
Sure. What might be helpful for those who haven't kept track of where those policies are would be to send out the current policies to all trustees with the invitation renewed.
Okay, we can do that again.
Can I do something, give some more information?
That's it?
I have just two. Prior to this meeting, we had a board meeting, and I would like to thank Trustee Rogers, Dr. Rogers, for sharing his parliamentary procedure, expertise of 30-plus years, and I think it was very beneficial. Also, I'd like to thank Trustee Barfis for doing the cookie walk in terms of support of the staff and all that they do. And then, Trustee Riddle, do you have anything to say about the Wilmatt Youth Day? Because you didn't mention that.
The Student Government Leadership Program.
The Student Government Leadership Program sponsored by the League. You were kind enough to represent us.
Yes, and I think it's on our agenda, too. It was very well organized. It was at Wilmatt Junior High, and a group of 7th and 8th graders participate, I believe, at 7th and 8th grade. And they invited the library, the Village of Wilmatt, the Park District, and...
District 39.
And the Wilmatt, yeah, the Wilmatt Park, or Wilmatt District 39. And so it was really nicely done. Anthony attended also, and we each were in a group with the students. And my group talked about intergovernmental agreements and how we all have to, you know, our dynamic of talking to each other, or not, maybe not talking to each other, the Wilmatt Public Library has a lot of unique characteristics. And Anthony prepared a really nice, really nice talking points that were very helpful for me in the discussion. They were more interested, though, I will say, I had to kind of nudge my way into kind of letting them know about the Wilmatt Public Library, but they were really interested in the flood. They called them bathtubs that are going to be in the High Crest or between High Crest and Wilmatt Junior High for flood prevention. And so the Park District and the Village really, you know, kind of talked about that, but I don't know if they had, like, had some type of, you know, articles that they had read before the night because they were really interested in those bathtubs. They kept calling them bathtubs.
Is that their, what is that the name for?
The reservoirs.
The reservoirs.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, right, exactly. Stormwater storage.
Bathtubs.
But it was really nicely...
They're not open-top. They're not actually a bathtub.
Yes, they're not, yes.
They're underground.
I don't know if you had any, anything that was interesting about that night.
Yeah, it was a really wonderful evening. It's fast becoming one of my favorite community engagement events. These 8th graders are so engaged. This year's group was a little bit smaller, and I think that was due in part to the consolidation of the two parochial schools and the fact that they didn't participate this year. I think we had 100 8th graders last year, and this year it was about 63. But their engagement was still very strong. I think due to the smaller size of the class, and maybe this is owing in part to why the kids weren't as engaged about the library's involvement, in their mock government, they will be representing the Village and the School District exclusively. Historically, the students would represent all of the governing bodies, so they would represent the Park District and the library, too. But this year, I think they were focusing more of their attention on the partnerships between the schools and the Village.
That's right, they did mention.
Should they do that again?
We haven't done that in over five years here because of, I think, we used to have, they used to be participating here when Ellen was here.
Well, I wonder if that's the way it's going to continue into the future, if there isn't some way of bringing in how the library can help with whatever they're talking about that's just for the Village or just for the Park District, and that way bring in the use of the library.
See, I think it was the number of students declined.
I think it was.
It's not about our partnership levels, because there's certainly a lot of talking points there.
You just got a lot less kids that are participating. And I just got a footnote. We had Call Me American, a memoir, and he got his citizenship this week. I'm his Facebook friend, and so, FD. So that was wonderful.
That was, how long ago was that?
About a year and a half.
He was really excellent.
So he became a citizen.
Oh, that's terrific. Do you know where he's based now?
I can go look it up on Facebook, but I think he's up, he's up in New England.
He's like mainly around Main Street.
Because that's where he went to school, and that's where he got his family, but yeah.
Yeah. He was fascinating, really good.
So that's just a positive note of how powerful our books are and some good things happen. Yeah. Any other business? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second? Okay, Trustee Wolf? No, just, yes, Trustee Wolf moved that we adjourn the meeting at 8:12. And Trustee Fishman, second in the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passed. Your name on the slate.
Sure, it's moving here. First meeting of year.